A little bit, but I've always, I've still got another two hundred ton that I can buy without, I believe, without going over any extra. I gotta get a hold of Cargill on that and find out if they're gonna do that this year.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, the way it works is we tell the state, we're gonna buy, let's say, five hundred ton, okay? I think this year we said four hundred ton, didn't we?
No, I said five hundred this year.
Five hundred, okay. And then, are we required to purchase eighty percent of that five hundred?
Yes.
And we can purchase up to a hundred and twenty percent of that five hundred at that state price?
Yes.
Okay. Now, have we purchased our five hundred then?
No.
Okay. So, we will expect to take delivery of some still then, right?
If we run into a snowstorm or something that dwindles down the supply beyond what I'm comfortable with, I can still get two hundred more ton to satisfy my upper quote.
Okay, so you could get another two hundred ton to get you to a hundred and twenty percent of what we said.
Yes, that would give me the six hundred ton, which is a hundred and twenty.
Okay.
Over. And then, anything after that, the way that they had it set up, Cargill was going to, uh, get you in touch with a third-party salt dealer, which, at the time when we did that, it was like a hundred ten dollars a ton. But that's when the salt was sixty dollars, sixty-three fifty-nine or something like that. This year, it's forty-nine fifty-nine, I believe.
That's what we paid for it.
Yeah.
So, our salt barn holds how much salt total?
They say it holds nine hundred and fifty, but that if it's totally enclosed, you can get roughly between seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty, and that's where it'd fall out to be.
Okay. So, my, my thinking is, since the price of salt is so low this year, regardless of whether we need it or not to put on the streets, do you think that we ought to go ahead and get that hundred and twenty percent amount at that low cost and just leave it in the barn the way that we did at the end of last year, you know, when we had it full of the gills?
I would. I think better safe than sorry, because if we get the other two hundred, you would only be probably be able to get another two hundred beyond that before it'd be running out the doors. And Cargill and the state contract, the way it runs, it runs from September till the end of August. And of course, our budget runs from January to December.
Uh-huh.
So, the year starts over in September.
Okay.
But you don't have to buy it September, like this year, we bought it in January, I believe it was, when we began here.
Yeah, 'cause we had so much in the barn already.
Right.
Okay, so, um, yeah, I mean, as long as we have room in the barn to put it, I think we ought to buy it regardless of whether we put it on the streets this winter or we just leave it in the barn and use it next season. Okay.
Dave, uh, just as a point, what are you comfortable with on the structure? Fifty ton?
No, 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 no. Somewhere between a hundred and fifty, a hundred ton. Because if you get a two-inch snowfall, you'll go through anywhere between a hundred to a hundred and fifty tons.
Oh, okay.
And if you get into freezing rain, you use a lot more. Second thing on the agenda is dump trucks. The age of our trucks are getting to the point that, uh, some of them are over twenty years old. I've got one that we have out of service that's a nineteen ninety. It's, it's been out of service for about a year, and I have another one that just went out because the bed rusted out. The frames on the bed just literally gave way. And that's, a lot of that's got to do with the age of the trucks, the amount of water, salt water, the salt they've been subjected to. You can clean, and clean, and clean, and you will never get it all, and the steel will absorb that, and it just keeps into the steel and starts, the steel will start to crystallize. And then after over a period of time, they're just, it falls apart, and that's basically what's happened with these two trucks. I'm in the process of trying to find a bed to replace the one, which would, because it's still a good truck, it's just it needs a bed for the, what year's the one of the bed? Ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven.
And the other one's a nineteen ninety, that's the one that's been out of commission. And, and basically, the same thing has happened to that. The, the frame rails underneath the dump bed just literally disintegrated.
So, that's why it's out, it runs, but it's, but the frame's bad?
The dump frame, not the frame of the truck, the, the subframe of the dump bed. They just literally, they rusted apart.
When, um, when Bob, uh, gave me his list of capital improvement items that he wanted to see, he had a hundred thousand dollars on there for a dump truck in the street department now. You know, we, we only put three percent of the taxes into capital improvements, so spending a hundred thousand dollars on the truck clearly would have less spending this year, more than what we put in. But, uh, we're gonna need to have, you know, conversations to decide whether or not getting, uh, you know, spending that hundred thousand dollars on a dump truck in the street department is worth, you know, dipping into that carryover in our capital improvement fund. When will you, uh, when will you know whether or not there's a, a bed that might be available? And if it is available, who knows where it would be, how would you get it on?
I've looked for a very long time to try to find a used bed, and they're scarce as empty. I can't, I've looked and I can't find anything that would be worth the money to get, that would allow us to, you know, continue using the truck. So, I've checked into new beds, and depending on which route you go, whether you go with just the dump bed, or if you go with the full hydraulics, the subframe, the cylinder and everything, you're looking at anywhere between thirty-five hundred dollars to just have the bed installed, up to eight thousand dollars to have a brand-new bed with new hydraulics, lift cylinder, and the lights, and painted orange.
Okay.
Eight thousand dollars.
So, no more than ten grand for a new bed installed on the truck?
Yes.
What, would we take it to Zanesville or something like that?
Depending on where you get it, Ace, Ace was one of the quotes, and Robertson Trucking was the other quote up in Mountmore.
Okay.
Those were about the two closest that, you know.
So, that would take care of the truck with the bed?
Yes.
We still have the ninety-one that is just
That is, yeah.
Used up.
How many miles are on those trucks?
I think the ninety has like fifty-five or fifty-six thousand miles, and the ninety-seven has roughly, I think it has around forty-seven or forty-eight thousand.
Now, Dave, did you say that the ninety's problem is the frame rails and everything, just like the other ones?
On the dump bed, yes.
On the one from nineteen ninety?
Because the ninety is the same way, the dump bed, the main rails of the dump bed are the ones that are rusting.
Could it, could it be that?
You could put another one, but you're still looking at a nineteen ninety truck. If you're gonna put eight thousand dollars on a truck that's probably only worth five or six. That, that's the only thing that you're getting into right now, is the age of the trucks, and you know, you're putting more money in than what the trucks are actually worth. I, I personally, I think seventeen is worth the money to put a bed in, but I don't think nine or five.
Those are the truck numbers?
Yes, those are the truck numbers, yes.
Is the engine on the drive train in good condition on the ninety? It's a diesel engine, so?
Nope, these are gasoline.
These are gas engines.
One, one is a fuel-injected, and number nine is just a regular carburetor.
I, help me understand now. I, I, I understand the thinking of you're spending more to fix it than what it's worth. But if a new one is between eighty to a hundred thousand, I guess my question is, if everything else in it is in good shape, you don't think it would be worth getting some more years of service out of it by doing the, the Band-Aid?
Not on five. On seventeen, we have already put rebuilt the alternator, put a new water pump, we've put a new, uh, air compressor. I believe we've changed out the, uh, air dryer for the air brakes. We've put new hoses, we've put a new radiator, we've put, um, new belts. We've pretty much, you know, we haven't overhauled the engine.
So, you're saying almost rebuilt the thing?
Yes, you know, so, that's why I'm saying a lot of seventeen, we've changed out, and then the bed just ran.
Uh-huh.
So, I, I, that's why I think it's worth the money to put a bed on seventeen, but five, five, you're looking at possibly doing the same thing.
And how much, how much is that?
Well, the, the radiator is about two thousand dollars, the alternator, you're talking about a hundred and fifty. Um, you know, hoses and belts are probably racking up another hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks. And then, and then, if you start have to rebuild the front end, the kingpins, the suspension, the leaf springs, because, yeah, they've been sitting in, and I don't believe we've done any reworking of those for at least five or six years, and the salt's been in it, and you know, like I say, I don't care how well you clean, it gets in between the leaves and it starts doing its thing, and eventually, uh, if you gotta put a set of rear, uh, springs on that type of truck, you're looking at close to a thousand dollars or twelve hundred. And if you put front ones on, you're probably about half that price, because you aren't using as many springs. So, you know, it, it, it gets to be expensive, and you're still only looking at a five thousand dollar truck.
For these trucks that you spread the salt with and everything, how often do you have to keep it to the front ends? Do you do that every year?
We grease them, usually about two, three times a year.
Replace them?
The only time we ever, uh, go through and, and replace stuff like that is when they break. Like if a ball joint, now they don't really have ball joints. Kingpins, if a kingpin goes bad, uh, if your tie rod ends and stuff start going bad, yeah, we change them out. And we only do it when they need it. But if, if you keep them greased and keep the water and stuff out of them, they usually last, well, like I say, nine or five, I don't think we've ever rebuilt the front end on them.
Uh-huh. Really?
Plus, you grease them, they've lasted a long time, you know.
So, the, it sounds to me like what you're describing is, the ninety-seven truck, the bed is just about the last thing to have gone bad on it. On the ninety truck, the bed is the first thing that's gone bad on it, and you're thinking there's gonna be other stuff coming. Is, is that right?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've, we've had the transmission go out of five, but that's been fifteen years ago, two years ago, and it was replaced. I mean, there's, there has been other things that have gone wrong with the truck, uh, but when we parked it due to the bed, I don't believe there was anything major, you know, far as driveline or engine-wise or anything like that.
Because of the way these trucks are used, the elements are rough on them, I guess, but they don't get a lot of miles.
No.
So, the things that are involved with it going down the road
Yeah.
are pretty, pretty decent. That last, uh, I can't remember what department I sold that last, uh, gas.
It was ours.
Was it yours?
No, no, it was Water, yeah, it was Water Apartments, yes.
And, I mean, that, that thing, if I remember right, had thirty-eight thousand miles on it, and, uh, you've, when you, when you looked at your competition, when I sold that on eBay, you'd find trucks that have a hundred and fifty thousand miles that are your competition, that, that garnered some interest because of the miles.
Mm-hmm.
And so, your advantage, I guess, is the drive train is, on these should be pretty good.
So, it almost seems to me to be a no-brainer to spend the eight or ten on a bed for the ninety-seven. We've put so much more, we've put so much money into it in other places, why let it sit in the barn?
Well, that, that, that truck, if you put another bed on it, would probably go, I would say, between another five and ten years without any major, major problems on it. Other than the fact, other than the fact of the age of the truck, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
And how long's the ninety been out of service?
About a year.
So, we've been operating, at whatever level we've been operating for at least a year without it?
Right, but, but we haven't really had the manpower to use the truck at the street department either, so, I mean, it's not like it was a great loss. It, it helps out in the wintertime, because if you have an extra truck that you can use to chip in or haul stone with or something, right now, every truck I got has either a salt tank or a salt shaker on it. I have nothing to, uh, put or chips in or anything like that if we go out and trim trees.
You don't have anything just equipped to be a dump truck?
Right, exactly, right.
And it's a process getting them ready to salt, and the process taking that stuff off?
It's not an easy job to jerk it out, use it for a day, and put it back in, get it ready for night, because it, on a tanker, it takes about two hours to three hours to get it set up to where you can pull it out. And by then, you know, if you gotta put it back in, it's gonna take an hour and a half, two hours, sometimes three, to put it back in, so.
So, what were you using, I, I know that you've, uh, and, and I'm sure you're going into this in detail here in item number four, but I know you've been fixing potholes. What have you been haul, hauling the cold mix in? The dump truck or?
Or hot box.
Oh, oh, okay, all right.
But, where I've been
Were you using hot, you weren't using hot mix, right?
No, no, they don't make hot mixes.
All right, that's what I was gonna say, so you just put cold mix, but you put it in, okay, all right.
Yeah, it gets in a hot box, you heat it up a little bit to make it pliable, makes it easier to work with. And the stuff that we're getting, uh, I'm getting out of Columbus is fifteen dollars cheaper than what I could've get from Cozy, so I'm saving money there, it's just the fact that I gotta drive up, and, and we're getting ten ton at a time now, and I'm stockpiling it in our spot, so that way, I'm not driving back and forth with just the hot box.
Yeah.
You know, money-wise, we're, we're probably saving on the money-wise, even if we go up and get it ourselves, because they don't deliver, but it's a lot better stuff. The stuff we're using now, um, gets better made, it's lasting longer. We haven't had any of them come back out, because, uh, some of the stuff that we use, the, the cold mix would come right back out after a heavy rain or whatever, and then we gotta go right back and go back through and do it all over again. But what we're using this year, so far, we have not had to redo the same pothole over again. We've had other sections beyond where we fixed come out, but we've not had the same, and it's a better mix.
Next item?
Can I, I say something about the truck situation? Yeah, the parks, we do help the streets, and they do need help. We haven't been able to help them as much, because they don't have a truck to put our extra guy in. Like, you know, I just wanted to add that we have two plow trucks and three drivers, and typically, one of our guys will hop in a tanker and help them out without that extra truck.
Yeah, and believe me, the, the help from the Parks Department is, is greatly appreciated, because it makes things go a whole lot faster.
Yeah. Dave, I don't, don't know what this truck looks like or anything like that, but could you, rather than put another dump bed in, could you take that off and just mount either a tank or some, so you can still use the truck, like with a plow on the front, or put weight on the back, so it gives you stability, and just use it as a, to get, you know, the salt spreading and that capability, but just have it as a, you know?
I could, I could, but it, it takes away from my being able to, uh, do any chipping or any, I would have to take our one ton and revamp it to, and, and then to do any chipping or anything, which I could do, but then, you would do one or two trees, you'd have to take off and go dump. So, you know, it's slowing down the process. Believe me, I thought about, I thought about just putting a flat bed on it and putting another tank, but then that just makes that truck specifically used for that, which is with, with the bed.
So, eight months out of the year, it's just sitting in the shed?
Yeah, right. Which is what it did for the last two years anyway, because the bed was bad enough, and I was trying to find me a good used bed, and then, like I said, they're just, they're not gonna be found. And if you do, they're so beat up, and, and you'd have to make so many changes to the bed to get it to swap over to fed, it just, it wasn't worth it.
I was just trying to think of a useful way to get out of it. And that's what I, I, you know, again, without, if we don't wanna spend, you know, six figures on a new truck, with something like what Tim outlined, although not perfect, would it be better?
I wouldn't call it better. I mean, it, it would do in a pinch, but I would, I wouldn't call it better, because, you know, we, it's, it would be an older truck. That's what we use to, or cleaning ditches, or hauling big gra, big rock and stuff. You, you can beat up an older truck a little bit more without tearing up your newer trucks, but if you put a new bed on it, then you're kinda going back to square one, and you'd have to make up your mind which truck you would have to use. But I would still probably go an older truck, because that way, you're saving your newer trucks to last longer.
Let me ask you this then, let's say you got a brand-new dump truck. I mean, like, your wish list is the perfect vehicle you'd like, okay? So, you bring it into service, then do you, like, shift all the other trucks around to, to do the job? I mean, which one becomes like the chipper?
Ninety-seven, I'll become the beater?
I mean, you know, do you, I mean, do you shift around, or, or you have to move equipment around, or?
Usually, usually the way it works on us, if we get a brand-new truck, depending on if it's taking a salt shaker's place, or if it's taking a tanker's place.
Which would this, which would you want?
This would, this would take a tanker's place, that way it would, yes. That way, it would, you would put a tank in it, and that's what it would use, and then you just kinda go down the line, and, and the oldest truck that you have, um, would be your beater truck, your extra for chipper trucks, or, you know, haul stuff during the winter, or whatever we need. That, that's usually the way it works for us.
Does the brine water, is it, is rough on the trucks as the salt is?
It's all about the same.
Is that right?
The, the brine water will dilute a little faster, it'll last longer, but when it gets, when, if you accidentally run over your tank and you got all that brine water in your tank, it starts to eat on the metal, even if you paint it, eventually, it, it starts to eat away, and then once it gets to bare metal, and it just goes crazy. And then usually in the springtime, when we pull a tank, it'll have rust in it. We run a couple loads of gravel through it to knock the rust out, and then we're usually good. And then in the wintertime, we go back through, we paint all the beds and get a coating on it, so that way, if you do get water splashed in or whatever, it takes a lot longer for it to start to eat in.
Yeah.
Uh, item number three.
Well, we're run, we're running into the situation that the roads are starting to get in pretty bad shape. Willow Ridge, it's, there's good spots and there's bad spots, but I'd say the mostly up there is bad. It, it's gonna be definitely in line that, you know, we would, should look into trying to get that repaved. But if, if it works out that we can't do that, and we need some small routes paved, we've got the short section of South Thirtyeth in front of Kroger to Dorsey Mill, you know, you could repave that, because it's in bad shape. You've got the section of Irvingwick West that goes from the Rarick tracks to Thornwood, that's in bad shape. You could repave that. The Liberty, Liberty from Irvingwick East to the city limits, it's, I know it's starting to get in bad shape. There's, there's a four or five, I know Bob mentioned, uh, all of the section of Franklin where they redid the water line, where they dug up. You could put a coating of asphalt on top of that, and it would be good, but actually, all of Franklin needs to be redone. I mean, it's getting, I think the last time it was done was back in ninety-four, I believe, or something like that.
Dave, let me ask you something about Franklin. There's two areas that are coming north on Franklin. There's two areas there on a curve where, did you guys, did you guys pave that right there? There's two areas that's looked like, uh, new pavement's been put down there.
Wasn't there a repair last year that we did on Franklin, or was it the year before?
We did
Something like almost a washout happened or something?
We did two sections on Franklin last year that we actually had to repair. Uh, we dug the asphalt out, it was probably
Be on the east side?
Eh, yeah, it would be on the east side heading north, I believe there was two sections. Because they, they got to the point that, I mean, I, I don't think we could've did it with the salad shooter. Well, that
The salad shooter. I like that.
That was the nickname.
I like that.
Shoots everything out, you know.
That's the, what, the Durapatcher?
That's the Durapatcher.
Yeah, yeah.
The nickname, the salad shooter. But, uh, on Franklin, on the other side, before you get the forest areas, as you, after you pass through the pond, you can see where we durapatched that.
Yeah.
And we actually, we built that up like three or four inches, and this is the Yes, this is the first year that we've had a plow and everything on it, and it's actually, it's holding pretty good, so.
That Durapatcher, I think, seems to do a good job.
Yeah, and, and that's another thing, but where we are kinda screwed when it comes to trucks and that, because we don't have anything to put the gravel in, so when the weather actually warms up, that we could get out with the Durapatcher to do that. We can't convert our small one-ton, because it's, it's not only it's too short, but the bed, the pivot's on it, it, it goes out an extra foot, and we can't hook up to it with the one-ton in order to use it, because if you try to hook up, it hits the front of a hitch. It's like about this much too high, so, or the hitch is that much too high, so, we're pretty much kinda stuck with that until the weather gets a little warmer, and we get a tank or two off of it. You know, but, because, uh, we, believe me, we've got spots that we wanna use on that, too.
Yeah, because one of the, one of the selling points of that Durapatcher was is that it could be used
It could be used, yes.
In cold temperatures.
Yeah, it's got a, it's got what they call a neater, it's a nozzle heater, and it keeps that from freezing up, and so far, when we've used it, I think the coolest weather we had was like forty degrees back in November. And it, it worked out very well, I mean, nothing froze up, and, uh, the gravel worked pretty good, because it'd been kept dry, and, and so, you know, if, if we just had a nice place to store some gravel and a truck to put it in, you know, we could probably use that. Theoretically, you could use it all year round, but, you know, you gotta wait till it quits raining, moisture, or otherwise you're putting uh, water-based stuff down in the water, and it, it thins it out and it looks dead.
Dave, uh, a year or two ago, we talked with Jobz about Willow Ridge. And we talked about some options, you know, just putting a new layer of black top down over what's there now. Or trying to improve drainage on the sides of some of those streets to keep water out from beneath them. Um, all the way to basically tearing it all up and doing it right, I'll, I'll say.
Right.
And, uh, I wanna say that, you know, we, we didn't use any of our license plate fund money last year for anything. So, with this year's accumulation, we should have about three hundred thousand dollars in that license plate fund, which you know, you have to spend that money on something that's roads-related. If we were to just put asphalt down over top of what's there now, are we just, would we just be putting a Band-Aid over a problem that would resurface in a few years? Or would that give enough thickness of material that you wouldn't see the kind of crumbling that's taken place? Because the soil there seems clayey, you know, a lot, a lot of clay in it. Because the soil there seems clayey, you know, a lot, a lot of clay in it. So it's like soft, it's spongy, it, you know, when, when a, when a, uh, garbage truck goes up my hill. You can actually sometimes see it.
Ropes.
Yeah. So if we were to just put more material down, which would be the cheapest option that we were looking at, like I said, back in the past, would that be good enough?
In certain sections, yes. In certain sections, I think it'd be wasting your money unless you would go in and repair. Like the main drag on Willow Ridge is have in between Kimberly and Patricia, I believe it is.
Patricia. Or no, oh, what is that?
Piedmont.
Piedmont, yeah, there you go.
In between those two, you would have to at least dig that up and put a decent base back down or otherwise you're just falling yourself. Because that, if you'd put, even if you'd only put two inches, I'd, I'd prefer three, but if if you'd only put two. You're talking within the next five to seven years, that would start to break up again because there's nothing underneath to help hold. Now, we know, I, we know that on Cumberland Crest, when we dug that up to repair those spots up there, there is. Uh, I believe there is seven inches of base and there is three inches of top. If I remember right, because when we put everything back in, we dug it down to the base that they had, which actually in some cases it wasn't quite that bad. And then we tried to put new base asphalt back in up to within an inch and a half or two inches. And then from there, we put a top coat on top of that. In the most part, everything that we've repaired seems to be holding up fairly decent.
So something like that, you might be able to get by just putting a couple inches on top of what's there and 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 you'd be good?
I, I think so, but like, you know, the one section, you would have to go back and at least repair that. And everything else, uh. I think if you'd put three inches of asphalt on it, it would probably last you another ten years, ten to thirteen years or so. Just long as you don't get a bunch of overweight garbage trucks going up and down. School buses, I don't think you got that much to worry about, just usually your garbage trucks. Most of your garbage trucks when they're half loaded, they're overweight anyway, so.
Didn't we last year talk about getting some information about that to see what we can do to get that taken care of?
Yeah, that's what I was mentioning, there were, there were, there were three or four different options. Each more extensive and more costly. Is there any neighborhood in the city that's in worse shape, that's whose streets are in worse shape than Willow Ridge? Or is it the worst neighborhood in the city as far as the conditions?
I'd, I think far as the conditions of the streets, I would say that it's probably, if it's not the worst, it's one of the worst. It's probably in at least the top three. I've just gotta stop and think of.
Would you say, would you say it's a green barrier with the way that the, uh, side curves are, whatever? That, that asphalt's not?
All the crumbling currents too, yeah.
That, that's your biggest problem with green barrier is is the asphalt is giving way, not the asphalt, but the concrete is giving way to the curbs and the curbs are sagging, which keeps the water pumping on the asphalt, which, you know, it's not, causes a tear. You know, you've got additions in the city, you've got like Daisy Lane, the curbs on Daisy Lane are terrible. Far as the asphalt, the asphalt's not really that bad. It's just the curbs are terrible, you know? But Daisy Lane hasn't been paved in. I'm gonna say between fifteen and twenty years. And you've got spots in South Gate that haven't been paved in fifteen, twenty years, you know? And the road, you're just, the asphalt is just finally getting tired, I guess would be the best word to describe it. You know, it's just, it's starting to give out. But I know since Willow Ridge has been in there, we have done a lot of re-escavating, putting base down and putting stuff down trying to solidify the, the roads up, you know, the bases that it had. And where we've done that, some of it, the edges have kinda dropped down. I think that's where you, that's where you're getting a lot of your roughness, especially on Kimberly as you're going out. I mean, we, I don't have many places, I, I can't even count how many places through there that, and it's just, you gotta try plowing sometime. It just, it beats you to death, you know? And that, and that's what you're getting with the garbage trucks and the school buses and stuff like that. They're just, you know, they're beating it a little bit more.
So the three hundred thousand that we have in the street fund. If we're gonna look to spend that this year on paving, like I said, we didn't spend any of it last year. If we're gonna spend it this year on paving. Are you thinking that we either spend it all in Willow Ridge? Or pick out the road here, street there kinda thing, like Franklin, you know, Daisy Lane. Part over of Irvingwick there by Thornwood, you know, th- those kinda things. Either, either spend it all in one place or or hit the other rough spots in the, in the city?
That would be a hard question to answer on my part. Cause I know, uh, Hook and I have gone through and we've done measurements and we kinda halfway figured out how much it would cost just to asphalt all of Willow Ridge. And I think we came up with somewhere between a hundred and eighty and two hundred thousand dollars. That was just asphalt, that was not to do any repairs or anything like that. And we also came to the conclusion that if you were gonna do any type of repairs, it would probably be easier for the contractor to go in because he can take a grinder and he can grind all that bad out. And they could put stuff in in probably a third of the time as it would take us to dig out, put it in. Let it solid up and then come back and re-dig out in asphalt before they would come in and ask.
We don't have a roller, do we?
We've got a small roller. I think it's only a forty-two inch wide. I think they consider it a two-ton roller. It's not a very big one.
Can you rent something like that if we wanted to?
Yeah, I suppose you could, but I don't know, um. If it would actually be worth the money because our roller, for what we do, our roller does us fairly well. Because if you try to do small patches and you get a big roller in, it's not gonna fit.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and so like I said, we, we usually, when we do a patch, we try to make it wide enough for our roller to actually go in and and go from one inch to the other. Sometimes we run in that, the patches are bigger than that, but our, our roller seems to be suiting us, you know, fairly decent. And it does us a decent job. Yeah, as far as road repairs, I mean, you know, we can do a lot with a Durapatcher. It's just like right now, the, the weather's kinda got us screwed up in that standstill. Until the weather breaks and we get some trucks freed up, you know, you know, we, we won't be able to do a lot of that. And I do know there's a couple spots on Thornwood, there's a section on Tha- South Fork that we're actually gonna have to cut out, put new base in and then let them drive on it for a week or two or, you know, a month or whatever to get it solid back up. And then we'll have to go back and dig it out and we'll have to put asphalt in. Because I don't think Durapatching is gonna do any good because the base has already gone out. And if you don't have a good base, I don't care what you use, it's not gonna last.
Let me ask you a question, Dave. Not this summer, but next summer. Thornwood Drive is supposed to be repaved. I believe part of that project calls for X amount of repairing as opposed to just paving. Before we go into the expense of what you're talking about this year to repair parts of Thornwood. We probably need to get with Jobz. We need to look at how much is outlined in that project for repairs. And identify, okay, what spots need to be repaired? What spots are gonna be done in the project? If all of the spots can be done in the project, then we probably shouldn't bother repairing them ourselves this year. We should just wait until next year when, when they do it.
The only thing about that is, is that would be fine as long as there's no spots that cannot wait until next year. If there's no spots out there that cannot wait till next year, then we would have to go in and repair those. And I don't think, like we, last year, I don't know how many spots we did on Thornwood because it, those couldn't wait. We absolutely had to go in and do them. We do not have that amount of money for spots to do this year if we have, if we have to do any at all. I know there's only like two or three spots that I'm thinking of.
On Thornwood?
On Thornwood. And some of it is a question of whether it belongs to the county now or not.
No, it's gonna be us.
So we actually own the whole road then and then everything off the road belongs to the county?
We're gonna work with the county on a maintenance agreement. We're gonna own the surface. They're gonna be responsible for bridges and culverts. Cause they have easier and better funding sources to deal with things like that than we do as a city. And on the flip side, the condition of Thornwood Drive is never going to be as bad in the county's eyes. When you look at all the roads in the county, it's never gonna be as bad as we think it is in Heath. So we're gonna, we're gonna do a maintenance agreement on Thornwood where we've got the surface, they've got the bridges and culverts.
Other items, um, I know there have been complaints about the traffic lights up and down Seventy-Nine. The turn lanes running short, um, missing cycles at Parkview. We were aware of the problem and we've been in the process of trying to get that taken care of. We've actually gotten with the, uh. The consultant, I guess, or the consul, the, the person responsible for doing the timing. We've gotten ahold of him and he's actually gotten in and he's straightened up a few of the items that, where the problem was. Because our computer at the shop wasn't talking to the master computer down at Hopewell and that computer wasn't talking to all the controllers up and down Seventy-Nine. So therefore Seventy-Nine wasn't in synchronization and it was running on its own and it was running on a completely different program that I thought that was actually in it. But I think it was running most everything on minimum time. But he has gotten, he has went in there in the last four days, couple days last week, couple days this week. He's actually gotten in there and he's straightened out some of the problems that was occurring on it. And I had Dana and, uh, Chris take a look at that today. And I never got any negative feedback as to, uh, the turn lanes or anything like that because I wanted to make sure, cause if we still have a problem, we've gotta go to him. We can't get Jobz and Henderson come in because it's still evidently, it's under the construction contract and that person there.
Hasn't been handed over yet.
Yes, that, that person there is responsible for it, so he's been taking care of everything so far. Once, once we finally found the right proper channels.
Dave, let me mention this too. I'm continuing to hear from people. And there have been recent accidents at the intersection of Andover and Oberlin. My hope was that after a couple of months of it being reopened and the drivers in that area seeing the new traffic pattern. That we would stop having these people who are making left-hand turns turning left in front of people who are trying to go straight through the intersection. However, that seems to continue to be happening. One of the hats that I wear obviously is safety director. I'm coming to the conclusion that the only way for us to solve this problem is for us to have a dedicated left-hand turn arrow in the left-hand turn lanes. Let cars that wanna turn left, turn left and then they stop and the straights and the rights then go. I don't know if it's because of the fact that the intersection, although it's not offset anymore. It's not, you know, a perfect ninety. It's like, it's like Hopewell and Parkview. I, I don't know if that has something to do with it or or not, but I, I, I'm coming to the conclusion that just given both sides the green to go left, straight or right, this, this, this not gonna cut it.
I, I think people are very subjectively hard to change. And they're having a tough time trying to adjust. The signs that show the left turn, mushy old on green, they're kinda hard to see. I was behind some today that everything went through just fine. But I do know there have been accidents there because people are used to coming up and seeing a green and making a left turn. And they don't care who's on the other side. There's two ways to go about to, uh, fix that. The one way is like you mentioned, but just a separate left turn on both sides and let both go green. Or you let Andover go, let them make the left turn, straight through and whatever while you're holding the Oberlin side. And then you let the Oberlin side go, let them make the left turn while the Andover side waits.
My problem with that is, is we're defeating the whole purpose or one of the purposes of aligning those intersections, which is better traffic flow on Seventy-Nine.
Well, the, the only, the only thing you could, you could, and and if you do that, you would have to take time off of Seventy-Nine to get to your side streets.
Yeah.
But I would, if it, if I was to do that.
Offset intersection.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. You know, if I was to do that, I would give more time to Andover and then like maybe fifteen, fifteen seconds for Colonial because you don't have a lot of traffic on Colonial, except when the school, you have, or Oberlin. You have more traffic on the Andover side.
Yeah.
And, um, I mean, you could do the dedicated left-hand turn, but even then, I think you're still probably gonna have to take a, a little bit of time and I'm only probably talking maybe ten seconds off Seventy-Nine in order to.
For the lefts.
For the left turns, yes.
Yeah. That would be better than having one side go green and then the other side go green.
And I, I think you could probably do that, but you would have to change the programming in that particular controller.
Well, from a safety standpoint. I'm not sure that people are making the, I'm not sure that people are driving properly through that intersection.
They're not paying attention.
And they're not, they're not learning to drive properly through that intersection.
They're, they're not.
So we need to do, you know, like I said, I, I also, I wear the safety director hat in the city and and I'm, I'm coming to the conclusion that I don't know that people will ever properly drive through that intersection. So we might need to make them do it.
I, I will check into the, how much trouble would be to try to change the timing as to. If, if we can even, well, I'm sure we can do it. I just need to find out if they've got any turn loops and stuff in the road set up. No, that, is that camera?
Yeah.
No, that's not camera.
Is it, is that camera, is that intersection?
That is camera.
Well, there, you need, you need to switch, the, the way the lights are, they need five-section lights or, or, you know, you'd have to switch.
Yeah, we'd have to put, we'd have to put a new, we'd have to put new up on the. Yeah, we'd have to put, we'd have to put a new, we'd have to put new up on the wires. Are they, is that intersection cambered, Tim, as you know?
Yes, I, yeah, it is.
It is? Well, that's good. So, so what we would be looking at then is the expense of the turn arrow lights and,
That basically, and just changing the timing because-
Yeah, changing the programming of the computer at that intersection.
Yeah, because then you'd have to go in to modify the turn lanes where the camera-
Right now, like if I'm on Andover, there's a signal here and a signal here. This signal's in front of the left-hand turn lane, but it doesn't have the arrows, it's just green, yellow, red. And then this signal over here is still green, yellow, red. Could we replace, and I know you're, I'm, I'm looking at it like I'm looking at it, you'd have to. Okay, so, can we, instead of the five color lights that Tim's talking about? The one on the left in front of the left-hand turn lane, could we just change out the lens to the, so that it's just an arrow of light and?
Yeah, could you need, you need to have it that there's two lights for the lane going straight across or whatever? Cause if the light would go out to red, is the red go out? So, so when you have a thing like that, you need a five-section light so that the reds, mean reds, and then you have the green arrow that means you've got protected. And then when you have, you have the two greens that would come on that mean you can still go or whatever. Or you have like the red arrow that says you can't turn left and all that kinda stuff. There's, there's a method to the madness, but you need like two lights for the one lane coming across and stuff like that. It sounds redundant, but you'd either have to do a separate three-section light, so you'd have two, two lights, so you'd have a total of nine lights.
Okay.
Or, or, or you go with a five-section, which is only five and three, which is eight lights.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
So, so we've got, so with, with a, with, with a left-hand turn lane and a straight right lane, you need five lights here and three lights here or something like that?
Yeah, cause what you have to have the left turn, the left lane, okay? When it's time for it to go, you'll get a green arrow, cause it's protected. That's what you want. You want it protected, so it has a green here, okay? Then it has to go yellow and then it goes red. Then, when the lane, the lane beside it, when it can go straight across or turn right, okay? Well, then that's when the other lights turn on, you have the two green, just green bulbs, and then they go yellow and they go that, okay?
Alright, alright.
Cause you need two reds, so that red light up there controls the things.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the other thing you can do is you can do where you don't, now, in that scenario, when I said you have that green bulb here. Okay, right. You also could have that five-section setup where it has a red arrow in that lane so that you can't turn left when the light's green. Cause most places, you know, Norc has several of them now, where you're not allowed to turn. You know, normally, well, that's why I'm seventy-nine, and seventy-nine is, you can't make the, you know.
But the thing is, there's a lot of people think that that red arrow means you come to a stop.
And then you can get-
Have the right of way.
Right, and again, people don't know what, what the laws and what the lights mean and stuff. And it's really complicated at times to think that all through, but there's a method to the madness of why they have lights. And if you check with like Jobz Henderson, they can sign or tell you what, you know, the, the lighting is and stuff. But it's not as easy, you'd think it'd be real simple. Now, if you went with split phase, like we talked about earlier, like it used to be, Oberlin went Andover, you know, Andover went, then Oberlin went. Then you could keep the lights the way they are, because essentially it would be green on this side and all red everywhere else. And then it'd be all green on this side and all red everywhere else, and then it'd go back to the way it is. But it takes a little more time, could take a little more time, a little less time to do that.
You, I'm sure you go through that intersection quite a bit. You see it happening, don't you?
If you're, if you're coming out, if you're coming out of Oberlin and you're going straight across, like I'm gonna go over to Turkey Hill. You gotta watch. You wait, unless you got my car and it's like, I wanna get hit, so I go right through. But, uh, let's take out the camera. But essentially, I could be hit just about every time I do that. It'd be real easy to get hit, but I, I'd see the people and I, you know, stop or no, you can tell, you, you eye the person across from you.
People are just not getting it.
Well, half the problem is if you're on the Andover side, there's a light that's in, I don't know if it's the parking light from Walgreens or if it's a street light there, but it actually blinds you from seeing what the sign reads at night. You cannot read that sign that says left turn, you know, yield on left turn. I think it's a parking lot light. There's one of them. It just, you cannot see the sign. You can't read it, I mean, that's just-
Those are the LEDs from the traffic light, just so bright.
Yeah, you, but you can't see that sign.
And the sign is right there next to the light.
Yeah, right above it, right?
You can't see it. So, the other thing is-
Is it above it or next to it? Something like that.
It's beside it. And then if you're coming out of Oberlin, going to make a left turn, well, you're across from the traffic that's turning left against you, and if there's more than two cars or if there's a big vehicle there, you cannot see what's coming straight across, like at you, so you gotta, you know, watch them. If it's a big vehicle, you're sitting and, until you creep out and try to creep around, and if the people coming out, they can't turn cause cars are going across. And it's one of them deals where you kinda look, like, and you're at such a skewed angle.
See, I'm thinking that the only way we're really gonna solve this and make that intersection better is to have a dedicated left, you know, they make the left-hand turns and then that, and then they have to stop and then the straight rights can go. That, that, that's the only way it's, that's the only way.
I'd almost check out to see if it would work better to go back to the split phase as opposed to that, that way.
I don't think it would, Tim. I mean, not, you'd have much more time of red on Seventy-Nine, which is one of the benefits of aligning that intersection. Is that the traffic flow of Seventy-Nine would, would-
Right, but what I'm saying is if you go with like you're saying, the left turn, dedicated lefts, that means coming out of Oberlin, coming out of Andover, the lefts will turn the same time. Well, sometimes you have zero cars coming out of Oberlin turning left, but you might have ten cars coming out of Andover.
Well, in that case then, you'd do like the, like the Hopewell Parkview intersection where, okay, people on Hopewell can make a left and people on Hopewell can go straight.
I'm just, I'm just saying if, if timing wise, it'd be interesting to run the, the scenario, which actually is more efficient. Because when school lets out, then there's a lot of people coming up there and they're going both ways. So if that light would just stay green with the camera, you could say if there's this many vehicles, keep green, then those cars could all get out of there and then switch, and if there's no one on the other side, then shorten it. So in other words, it's like a lot of cars coming out here, so we give this more time, less time, and then vice versa. So instead of the usual twenty-second, twenty-second, maybe it's thirty, ten, you know, or, you know, something like that, twenty-five, fifteen, and certain times it switches. But Seventy-Nine, we still have the same amount of time, it's just a matter of which you flip-flop the side streets. We could talk all night on it.
The biggest thing, yes, is, yeah, we could talk all night on what's the best way, but I think Dave is gonna work and try to work with people.
I think it's good for us to have Dave here to pick his brain on all stuff.
Yeah, where you have to put a light, keep the light, yeah, that's what I'm saying. You get wiring, the lighting changes if you put most of it up.
I don't think you can split section that. If you do a dedicated left, because if you're looking at two lights, it's gonna be green, you're straight through. You still need a red light there for the dedicated left, so you still got, I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's, that's why I think splitting times twenty-two would be less money.
Dave, thanks a lot. Appreciate you being here this evening.
So you didn't wanna know about the Thirtieth left turn lane?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead.
As far as I know, it's feasible to do, it's just that, what we'd have to do, we'd have to put new cabinets up, have the cabinets upgraded. Uh, I know one intersection has all the loops and everything in. Something was said about possibly going with a fisheye camera.
Yeah, what's that guy, did you, is that guy rescheduled?
No, he, he, he couldn't make it. He, he's supposed to come, uh,
March eleventh.
For just the demo, if you wanna show up then, you know. I'd be curious, they do it down in Lancaster, I think has several in operation. I'd be curious to see what it is.
Well, I actually know any block grant money. That, that was the last thing that we discussed on that. It, it's feasible, I'm pretty sure. I know, uh, Andover and Thirtieth has the loops in for the left turns. Whether Thirtieth and, uh, Custer and Clarin does. I don't remember, I don't think they do, but it wouldn't be that big of a deal to cut them in and run it over. Biggest expense is you're looking at new boxes and have new boxes rewired, because both of those intersections, the boxes need updated anyway. They're, they're over twenty, and the one of Thirtieth Street's been hit a couple of times by trash trucks or school buses and issue's better than hanging on poles.
Have an engineer in for all the intersections out of his budget.
We haven't taken that step yet, please. I think we wanted to get some more information. Jeff was asking, and, and, and we need to maybe ask John Roth. Jeff was asking about, you know, block grant money that could help for this intersection.
CDVG, she's got low mod income on the, on the east side of the intersection, is that?
My understanding is that CDVG money for us is just about, we might not get any more at the time.
That was the last thing I heard, that we're almost at the rope stand of that.
Yeah, I, 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 I think they're redoing it or, or something and, and, and I don't think we're gonna be able to really get it.
And also, on that CDVG money, um, I think the lines for that are drawn on Partridge if I'm not mistaken. I, I, I'd have to go back and check some of my paperwork, but I wanna say that Partridge is where the line is drawn and everything on the west side is, uh, not covered in that grant.
Here's something that we're gonna need to take a look at, Craig's gonna talk about, or maybe I will talk about, or Parkson. Looking at the safe routes to school grant from ODOT. Could that be, now, trouble is, is that's more for kids walking or riding their bikes. This is clearly more of a traffic issue. I don't know, but that's something, I'll keep that in the back of my mind.
I'm, I'm not familiar with that grant. You've, you've got me overburrowed on that.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, just, cause my thinking is the closeness to Garfield.
Right.
I'll keep that in the back of my mind.
Um, you guys have parks to do?
Alright, appreciate it. Was it a sub?
You have it?
Take it easy, Dave. Thank you. It's gonna be a tough act to follow.
Before we get started, that was starting to sound like a math word problem to me, so I just wanted to give you my perspective on math word problems. My daughter sent this to me. I think it'll really help make it all make sense. Um, if you have four pencils and I have seven apples, how many pancakes will fit on the roof? Here's the answer, purple because aliens don't wear hats. That, that's what it was about. So anyway, we'll call Parks Recreation in Davis Shae to order at six thirty-four. Then first item is the pull-up date and maintenance on her, right?
Thanks for having me. As many of you know, the bath house is now forty-three years old. Has not had, interior is basically the same as it was forty-three years ago. Bob and I are in the process of trying to come up with some ideas.
It's classic, it's classic.
It's vintage.
Yeah, there you, that's right. Sell it.
Many of the complaints we get about our, the pool facility is about the restrooms and the bathhouse. However, our main project this year, before we even attempt to do anything inside, is to repair the roof. Because there's no sense fixing up the inside if the roof isn't any good. The last time we put a roof on the building was nineteen ninety-three. It's an EPDM rubber roof. It has a lifespan of twenty years. We are at that lifespan right now. We've been working with a local contractor to come up with a bid package as far as what we wanna do to roof, how we wanna do it. We have received that information and should be ready to go with the, out for bids sometime here shortly. However, there's been a couple of snags. We found out today. Eddie Hunt provided us with some information that the cost of this project may have to be paid at prevailing wages. Cause it's over, that cost, which we were told today is right now reconstruction, enlargement, alteration, repair, remodeling, renovation, or painting threshold level has been adjusted to sixty thousand dollars. Price of this project is over that. So, we're kinda at the standstill today to find out if this has to go prevailing wages, how that might affect the cost of this whole project. One of the things it might affect is the fact that we wanted to do the bath house and the filter building. We could not do the filter building this year.
The building is by the pool, by the, by tank.
Right, there are a lot less roof penetrations, it's a lot easier project to do. We could, if we have to use the money we had set aside for that, to do the bath house, we, we might be able to do that. Another thing that's driven up the cost is the removal of the old roof. Twenty years ago, to save money of course, instead of removing the old buildup roof, we did the rubber right over the old system. Uh, we're at the point now where it all has to come off, clear down to the roof, back to the metal, to make sure that the metal is still good. So, um, any of you that know anything about buildup roofing, there's a material in that called pitch, which is an asphalt material. And you have to pay somebody to remove that professionally. So that has kinda driven up the cost of this project more than we initially thought. Still doable, but that's where we're at with that. So, I do have some information, we're not ready to pass it out to everybody about the project yet, but we are working on the roofing project. Bob and I both feel that that's the most important thing for the bath house now, so we can save the interior of the building. We don't want the roof or the ceiling inside coming down or anything like that. Uh, over the last few years, that roof came with a twenty-year warranty on the membrane, ten-year on the labor. So, the past ten years, a gentleman named Tom Lewis, I think most of you knows, a local contractor, is going, doing repair work on the roof over the last ten years, and he has good knowledge of this, of what we have there. And he's the one who's been working with us to come up with the bid package. How you know that the roof is leaking? I walk in and the lights are full of water. That's basically how I find out, because water seeks the easiest point to go to and you have holes in the roof deck for the electric and it runs down there and fills the lights up, not all of them, but some of them. So, uh, that's when I call Tom, he comes and gets it in shape for each season. Well, I think we're past the point of just patching it. We need to replace the old roof. We are planning, do you have any questions about that?
I got an idea for you.
Okay.
Saw a commercial the other day for this stuff called Flex Seal. It comes in a can.
You'll have more than eighty thousand by the end of the day. Plus your finger will fall off.
That's the thing that does the, the screen door, the bottom of the boat, yeah, yeah. Big can.
I got, I got another, you know, slimples use in the summertime and, and in the nice weather, just take them to the fall.
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of, like they said, sit on that tractor.
We're here to help.
Um, also included in this project would be replacement of the dome into a actual, uh, skylights.
That's where, where the, where you walk from the entrance.
Right, the bubble, the bubble is not in good shape. Plastic, forty years of use. And then the steel roof, which is on there, would be replaced also with shingles. So that if there is a minor problem, you can repair shingles a lot easier than you can take off long, I don't know how tall that is. You know, the sheet metal, the standing seam metal. And one of the problems we ran into, since we didn't take the old roof off last time, basically if, if this is the metal roof coming down, they just lifted up the edge of the flashing and tucked the rubber of the roof underneath. And that is pulling out from the twenty years, it's coming out from underneath the flashing. So, most of our leaking is occurring between the raised part, the slope part, and the flat part. So, in order to do it properly, we would take off the metal, run that thirty-six inches up the slope. So there would virtually no way for the water to run back up that high if there would be standing water on the roof. So that's why we wanted to do the whole thing all at once from, from top to bottom. Another reason would be, once you put the new rubber roof, you do not want people up there working on a sheet metal roof or replacing the dome two or three years down the road, cause you always have the chance of damaging your rubber roof. So anyway, that's ongoing. I think you all know, have talked about, I don't know the money part of it, but we'll prove some money to do that.
That was, uh, that was the, the, basically the one item for Bob. Was, was that.
Right.
He knew not to ask for anything more than that.
No, we're not, we're not. Nothing major. Uh, we are gonna do some interior painting goodbye for this year in the office, the medicine rooms, restrooms, mostly the stalls, the showers where they get a lot of heavy use. Uh, we are gonna do some interior painting, goodbye for this year in the office, the medicine rooms, restrooms, mostly the stalls, the showers where they get a lot of heavy use and water. Uh, storm damage, I'm sure you've heard about, we just now got the money, I was told, from the insurance company.
Was that right, Keith?
You, you got, yeah.
Part of it, right?
You've gotten part of it, we haven't got the loss of income.
Oh, okay, so that's still is a question now, okay, okay.
So, I have ordered the new umbrellas, we lost five umbrellas, the shade shelter's being replaced, we are getting a new, uh, on the new filter building, one of the doors got damaged and trees on the island were destroyed. I've talked to all those people, all that is going on right now. Uh, as always with pools, you have some minor leaks, uh, leaks in the baby pool, we're taking care of, we're still working on our issues with the activity pool. The old filter building pit has been recaulked, we found out we were just happenstance, we were working on something else, and we found out it had been leaking, we got it recaulked. And we could be looking at getting some caulking done on the lazy river, uh, this year, nothing major. The trailer we purchased, I think y'all know the trailer, we suggest we get that, keep people away from the front gate for some services, that was a very good success, and we're very happy that we purchased it. Cause now we don't have to tear it all down and set it back up, as far as all the wiring and everything, every year, but, uh, that's what I have on the pool, if you have any questions. So we'll keep you up to date on the prevailing wage thing with the pool. Want me to just keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, bike tunnels. We have ongoing problem with vandalism in the tunnels, and I'm just very thankful, our police department is very diligent about, people do call or call us about helping us with that, and they did find one of the two guys who were painting in one of our tunnels, and actually, I think we got some money out of them. But I just want everybody to know, all the graffiti on the.
Did they have to clean up the graffiti?
No, we just, we have to paint, we just.
A bit nice for them to have to paint.
But they probably would've done it wrong in that area. Anyway, uh, there was graffiti in the Irvingwick Tunnel, uh, State Route seventy-ninth, underpass, and the new bridge out here by the pool, the abutment, all had graffiti, that has all been painted. We also had vandalism underneath the new bridge by the Port Authority, there are wall packs in all our tunnels that light the tunnels at night. Four of those were smashed, so after that was done, we had, we spent over a thousand dollars for materials to repair those lights and a light in the Irvingwick Tunnel. Uh, I have purchased wire guards that we installed over the glasswork, and then I have fitted quarter-inch thick plexiglass between the wire guards and the lights. Hopefully, to keep them from being busted again, so anyway.
Titanium wire.
Just suddenly raised the bar a little higher. New conquest for these guys.
So anyway, uh, everything is, and I've been, I've been trying to be more diligent about going through the tunnels and the underpasses at least twice a week to try and stay up on, on things. So, hopefully, of course, the wintertime, people aren't as out as active, so we are trying to stay up on the bike tunnels and the underpasses. And Mayor, I think the next item Bob said he would be talking about.
Yeah, I, I, I mentioned this, um, briefly, um, before, but you'll see on the agenda tonight, under the introduction of ordinances, uh, twelve, which is, uh, the pileups agreement with Director of ODOT for Safe Routes to School Funds. The city would like to partner with the Heath City Schools to look at things that we can do with the access of the Safe Routes to School Grant through ODOT. Um, that would, um, enhance the safety of kids who walk or ride their bikes to elementary schools. So in Heath, we got Garfield and we got Stevenson. Um, this program is used only for elementary schools. Um, this ordinance, I'll, I'll be honest with you. When I read the ordinance, it seemed to be quite committal in its language. Um, Richard Waugh from ADR, um, has been working with us, uh, on, on putting this together, and this is the first step of, of something that we would do. This is ODOT's required language on this ordinance. Um, the city is not committed to, the, the city has not committed any funding toward this, the city doesn't have to commit any funding toward this. Um, what this basically allows us to do is to begin the process of putting together what our project would entail. And figuring out how much it would cost, uh, to do it. Um, when I saw the language of the ordinance, I emailed Richard with concerns that I had from, after getting some feedback from the law director. Um, and Richard said he, they're, they're not necessarily thrilled at ADR with the language on this ordinance either, but it's what ODOT wants. Um, but basically, like I said, this would be the first step. Next step would begin to look at, okay, well, what would we do? Uh, the schools will be, uh, responsible for surveying, um, I would assume nearby residents, uh, to the elementary schools to see probably how many kids ride their bikes, how many of them walk, you know, that kind of thing. Um, BZBA meeting's going on, going on the other side of the building here tonight. Um, what else? Uh, so this ordinance, ordinance twelve, the deadline to have this submitted to ODOT is March first. Obviously, we don't have another council meeting before then. So I'm going to request that you waive the second reading on this. Um, and I would ask that you vote to approve ordinance twelve. Um, Richard has already met, I, I, I talked to him about this, then he met with Bob, he met with, uh, I think Tom Foreman and Trevor Thomas, the superintendent and assistant superintendent, I know he met with Tom, um, to discuss this. The school, uh, administration's on board, um, so I think that this would be, uh, a, a benef- beneficial thing for us to do. You know, even if it just involves, um, putting in, you know, replacing sidewalks, um, along the area of, uh, you know, Garfield. Those sidewalks, I don't think have been replaced in, in, in quite some time, so, um, this is, uh, again, utilizing a, a state grant, um, and I think that, uh, he said, I, I don't know yet what the project would be, what the scope of it would be, what the cost of it would be. That's, you know, those are steps to come, this is the first step tonight, we get this submitted to ODOT by March first, which allows us then to, um, to put the project together, and then submit to ODOT for, for approval.
Do you have any idea how much money could be received from that grant, is there like a range that they're giving you?
Trying to think if there was something in, in email from Richard.
There was, you copied that to me, and if I'm recalling correctly, uh, not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars.
That's the figure that's in my head, too. Yeah. Um, I thought, you know, we've talked about that at-grade crossing of the bike path at Lickingview, that's basically right over top of the tunnel crossing. Um, I thought about that as a project, problem is, this has to be K through six based, and that's dealing with the middle school and the high school, so I don't, I don't think it would.
Sam's switch schools?
Yeah, yeah, there you go, hey, if you guys really wanna help. Switch schools for a year and it's.
Yeah, there you go, there you go.
Yeah, they're done, the project done.
Emily's looking forward to going to the middle school, she's. She'd be pretty upset with me, uh, oh, she goes back to Garfield as a sixth grader.
That Fulton school sign's right there on that pool.
That's right, yeah. Yeah. So, um, so anyway, like I said, w- w- we're just taking the first step along the road of what could potentially be a benefit for the city and for the school district. And, uh, but our first step is to approve this ordinance, uh, tonight.
Any questions about the ordinance or the project? During the night, we, we're up the park building, Tyler.
Well, we are in the process of what I call our annual winter cleaning of our shop, since we don't do it the other eleven months of the year. And during our little annual winter cleaning, we noticed we are having some, once again, roof issues, we're not, we're not asking for any money, I just want you to know it's out there.
Flex Seal.
Yep. We already did that once. On the, on the roof, and, uh, equipment maintenance is ongoing in preparation for the spring, we're bringing in some of the new picnic tables that we put in the shelter houses last year, reconditioning those. On a wider note, while we were inspecting the roof, we noticed we had a bird problem in our shop. And, uh, our shop, it's in two parts, there was the original building and the addition, well, when they added the addition on, uh, you know, the metal on the side of those buildings was kinda corrugated. And they put pieces up along between the roof and the, the metal that's supposed to keep any critters out, well, it was foamed, and that, over the twenty-five year period, it deteriorated. And I walked to the back of the shop and I thought, well, someone put a skylight in there? I could see daylight all around the top of the garage, and they had managed to get that foam out of there and had a nice little nest in our parks building, so Ron and Jim sat at the table and cut out metal pieces and folding them, and I screwed into the building, so hopefully the bird problem has been fixed, so. Try to end this on a little layer, no.
Any of the birds set off any motion detectors in the building?
No, 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 those are dual, dual motion detectors, and something like that.
Oh, I see.
They point up and down, and you have to cross both paths in order for it to set them off, so a rat or mice scurrying around or a bird flying up by won't set those off.
I see.
So hopefully the park won't have any more birds, you know what? I don't have anything, any other items, so.
Anybody else have anything else, any questions for Park? Yes.
Um, I, we talked about this last week, or I did some of the, but, um, in Pickerington, Giant Eagle has partnered up with the Parks Department, and they, they gave eighteen thousand dollars. They have concerts once every, once a week on Sunday evening, uh, I think seven o'clock, I don't know, has anybody ever been to one? I've been to several, and they're really good, they're, they're an hour and a half, and, uh, they, June through August, first part of June through the end of August. They have like a little amphitheater set up, but it's just a field, you take the blanket, and I'd encourage any of you globally, check it out on a Sunday. But it's, it's a family oriented, and it's, it's really good, and I don't know if anybody's ever thought about.
Do they have different kinds of music each week or something?
They do, they do, it's, uh, Chris Love's in his one, one song.
Oh.
Uh, Paris of the Carri- Caribbean, uh, different, different groups, they have, uh, tribute bands, well. But, uh, I don't know, has anybody ever made an attempt to partner up with, with some of the industry or some of the, uh, some of the big box retail stores for, uh, you know, sponsorship?
That's an interesting idea.
You said Giant Eagle, uh?
And they've been doing this for quite a few years, uh, I guess before Giant Eagle, it was someone else, but, but, uh.
I was gonna point to Speaker Store's Newark, I'm fine with that.
What, what park, do you know what park it is over there?
Uh, Walnut Creek Park. I've, I've been to one several.
When is it open?
Sunday, Sunday after Sunday evening, seven o'clock.
And what else do they have going on there, are they?
Well, they actually, they have, well, you know, I think you take your own.
Giant Eagle doesn't set up some kind of a tent or something like that to sell stuff?
Yes, free to the public, uh, I'm not sure if, if they sell, I, maybe they do sell some sections, I don't, I don't remember.
Okay.
But you're free to take a picnic lounge, and it's just a big hillside that, that's in a circle.
Uh huh.
And you sit there in a, uh, spread out blanket, or it's not so steep that you can't use a lawn chair. I don't know if we have anything that's like abusive or that, uh, it wouldn't have to be, but like, like that, it could be a, a flat field with a, a stage.
Right.
They also have, uh, Friday evening movies up there, and there's other stuff they have, they're, 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 uh, they're somewhere to look at, as far as, as far as what's possible.
Anything else?
When we talk, that idea come up to us, uh, we would like to discuss that with the Parks Board, is that, that, that kind of an idea? Because that's a pretty big project.
Yeah. You have director in the park?
Yeah.
You know, back several years ago, there was talk of, you know, building a dance theater or something at Geller Park, and stop for Celebrate Heath plus other functions and stuff. It's never really taken off, you know.
We actually looked at getting a portable stage.
Yeah.
Where the trailer would fold out into a stage, that way it would, you can elevate the people, and you could do something else by it. Cause our hill at the park would be pretty steep to put a lawn chair. I know, yeah.
All right, we're journeying at six fifty-seven, so.
All right, we'll start financing, we got a public hearing coming up here in about eighteen minutes, so. First item is appropriate one hundred and seventy-seven thousand eight sixteen eighty-three from Budget Stabilization to make the general fund end of year balance equal two million. Committee. Any comments?
Keith, what'll that, what, what did we say that, what did we bring, uh, carryover, or I'm sorry, Budget Stabilization, is it six hundred thousand?
Around, takes it down to about six hundred.
Okay, item two, appropriate for capital improvements.
Thanks, Craig.
Two, three thousand eight seventy-two.
Talk to you later.
Police car.
Did we talk about that at, at that?
Those are the safety committee.
Yeah, last week.
I missed last week, so.
Missed a week, you missed a lot.
I missed, did we have money in capital improvements for that, is this something we planned out?
Chief had originally discussed with me two cars, and the car, there were two cars being held by a state bid dealer. Let me get back from us on to two thousand twelve models, so, this is before.
Guys, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, item three, authorize the mayor entering the contract with Jay's Telly for impound lot services. That would be some of two hundred and fifty dollars a month.
I don't think it needs to be waived. Oh, oh, the, uh, the police car one needs to be waived.
Please space purpose operating Heath impound lot for monthly terms of two hundred and fifty a month, Deb, you may have, no.
Uh, we had, we're, we discussed that before.
Yeah, it was a higher number, it's really a higher number, so, did we determine, is this gonna be a longer term than a month-to-month kind of thing? One year, two years, ten years?
That has not been determined, that's what Keith was, what he wanted to talk to you about.
Yeah.
Comments?
Committee? Let me mention, um, it's, uh, I'm, I'm gonna point it myself, because I haven't been around the committee meetings, I don't generally come to safety committee. And I, I regret so in this case, I'm a little out of the loop, there's three parts of impound, there's impounding the vehicle, there's storing it, and then disposing of it. The disposing part I did, and, uh, there's some logistics regarding disposal that we have handled over at the other, at the existing impound lot. We have, uh, uh, two separate fenced-in yards, one of which, when we have an auction day, the public has access to where we pull all the cars out, and they don't have that. When we have an auction day, the public has access to where we pull all the cars out and they don't have access to the other part. We obviously also have parking for perhaps seventy-five attendees. We have a building that we set up our. Bidding number issuing and the settling of the ended auction. Receipts and so forth. All this stuff is not, I haven't been broached, talked with anybody in this regard, briefly with the mayor.
Let's talk, Keith, I remember we talked about. You know, some of, some of these things when we were discussing them the past couple of months ago or so, I mean, with, with Chief Shepherd. We, I know that the topic of, you know, the impound auction and things like that came up.
To best of my knowledge, the chief's never been to an auction. I don't think Lieutenant Mason's ever been over to an auction, as far as I know, as far as I recall. So. These guys don't really, I don't think, know what transpires. Anyway, I'm, I'm hoping to have some conversation. With, with them and perhaps Jay, you know, to, because we're gonna. We're gonna have some needs in that regard and, and I just, I don't want to feel left out of the loop.
Excuse me, there was a little bit of discussion about that because I remember I asked the chief about what he was planning on doing with his bicycles.
Yeah.
Because we have them two places in the auction and stuff.
Yeah.
And, and.
He was talking about, Jay was talking about building some sort of a structure over there, wasn't he?
Yeah.
And, and I think, and, and I think that was brought up about parking and he seemed to think that Jay's got plenty of space there. I forget how many acres he said Jay's got there.
At least forty-eight acres.
Yeah.
There was a building. They said that he was going to build a building. Was it a one car garage or?
Yeah, one car.
Yeah.
But I never thought about, like you said, a place for the settling of the bills and stuff. And, and I never considered the fact that, I forgot that, that you do separate the cars that aren't to be sold yet. I never thought about asking about that.
Well, and some, you know, sometimes there's pieces of equipment that we sell at auction. That we take over, stick in that lean to and, and wait till the auction day comes around. Flat, we've sold flatbed trailers, we've sold dump trucks, you know, vehicle wouldn't be a problem, but. Anyway, we, just, there's some, clearly some logistics. I, I don't want to get to the point where they say, let's have a sale and then I could, you know. We talked to Jason, you can't do that here or whatever, I, you know.
What did we talk about that? Was that Thursday?
I think Friday. Were you here Friday? I think it was Friday.
I forwarded that.
Yeah, I, I haven't had, I haven't had any conversation with those guys yet.
I don't think I got a reply on that forward. So, okay.
So are we just doing the first reading on this so we'll have time to get some of that information?
Yeah.
Will that be, will that work?
Sure, yeah, sure. I don't, I'm wondering what we're going to do with our, you know, we got, we got an investment in the fencing and gravel and. I don't know what Parks Department will do with that. I suppose they could tear that fencing all out and.
That was interesting. I talked, I mentioned that last week, remember? We might not want to do that right away, if, at least for.
Make sure it works out.
Uh huh.
I always kind of envisioned that if they were going to move the impound lot up here under this tower. That you could, you know, that, that fencing, you can restretch and stuff, you know. The, the size, you could move, you could move an impound lot really with not a lot of effort. I assumed that those poles were probably set in with cement, so you'd lose the poles, but the fencing and the caps. The top bars and the barbed wire and all that stuff, I would think you could move just easily, but.
Okay.
Just a comment.
Fourth item, authorize the director to enter into mutual aid agreements with adjacent political subdivisions. This hasn't changed in many, many years, so.
I think there may have been a couple, didn't Chief Shepherd say there were a couple of updates done to it, but other than that, I mean, the substance of it is, is the same.
Comments, committee, everybody okay? Okay, last item, Keith?
Well, we've got the refinancing of the water tower at one point one million dollars. And that's going on simultaneous to the bonding for the water plant at one point five million. Both of those events are on schedule to, probably have a bond interview, bond rating interview, I think it's scheduled for. I think maybe Thursday this week, if I read call correctly. Don't hold me, it might be Thursday of next week, but regardless, we're ready for that.
I think it's this week.
Is it this week?
Yeah.
And anyway, everything's going well. They were going to price the note tomorrow and the. It looks like we'll get even a better rate than we got last year. Right? That is real good. I think last year was less than one and a half, so. So I'm, I'm pleased that we went down this path. There was a little bit of risk involved in doing this, but it's worked out really good.
Anything else refining it, committee? Okay, down seven oh seven.
First thing I want to do this time, page. Hey Jeff, you mentioned public hearing. At the last meeting, you know, we set that public hearing. But then, did anyone get notified that we're not having the public hearing?
Are we not having the public hearing?
That's on, that's on, uh, March fourth, what's that all about?
Well, we said that that night, I said, you know, we'd have it February nineteenth, seven fifteen. Then Lynn called me the next day and you have to advertise that public hearing two times, a week or so apart. And there wasn't enough time from when we did that to do that. And I said, okay, well, you send out a notice to everybody letting them know about that. Well, I knew about it and I just assumed she sent it out, so obviously, no one knows about that.
So you said something, I looked down at the date, I thought it was in five minutes.
Essentially, the public hearing because the way either the charter, the way some, the number of times she has to advertise it, number of dates between advertisements. There wasn't enough time to have it. Do you know if the parties interested were informed that it's not tonight? Well, I guess we'll find out in five minutes.
I know, I know the Nellie O'Laurie and the church are aware of the date.
How about Libby?
Um, I believe so, I believe I contacted him too.
So everyone knows March fourth, I mean, okay, that's the main thing. I mean, I was thinking if they were showing up, we could go in there and explain the. But I apologize to everyone that you didn't get the notification, but I thought it would take care of you.
I, I checked on the website yesterday. It was on the website that was going to be tonight.
Oh, really?
On the civic website, yeah.
Well, to cover your tail, I think that I'd advise you to go ahead and have, it doesn't hurt to have another one. I think I'd go ahead and have the public hearing.
Well, I don't think you can have it unless it's properly announced.
Yeah, I did, but you can have, you also have another one on March fourth, right?
If you have, if your public hearing's nothing more than, this is the public hearing. We've got to do this exercise again because of the timing.
Well, I just look and see if there's no one shows up. I mean, I don't think we have to worry about it, I mean.
You're probably.
Yeah, you're right. I mean, no one's in there right now, is there? I mean, it's supposed to be like three minutes, so.
We're not, we're not pressed for caucus, then you can take your time.
Okay, all right, so in the future. We'll just try to get across the, across the eyes and bough the teeth kind of a situation.
Yeah, that sounds good.
That's why I'm glad.
That's why I said it that way.
Purple.
Yeah, purple.
We all have to learn hard, but.
Yeah. Well, I guess it's better to do that than, than to have the public hearing and find out it wasn't the proper, you know, too early, okay. Well, at least John and the, the, the people involved know about it, so they're not here, so no one else will probably be here anyway, so, okay. All right, well, that said, go into caucus for the rest of the stuff. Invocation is, Cletus? Okay. Lexington appointments that Gary Wymer, is that you, Mayor, doing that?
Yeah.
Petition for the liquor, Jeff, you take care of that?
Yeah, not request a hearing, receiving file, both of them, right?
Yep. Unless you guys want to have a hearing and spend the money for. Then we have committee reports, then introductory ordinances, ordinance eight, that one we need waived, right?
Right.
Yes.
And that is going to be done by Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Is that right, well, wait a minute, yeah, because you were, you were here because Brian wasn't here, okay.
Eight and twelve.
Nine also?
Public Safety Committee?
Oh, Public Safety Committee.
I thought you were talking about waiving.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so John's saying also to waive the second reading on nine. When do, when does, when does ODOT need that?
March fifth or sixth, something like that.
Yeah, we'll meet again on the fourth.
I, I just want to get it done.
Okay, so that's the street paving, um.
So, Mr. Shepherd, you want to do that one?
Number nine?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, second reading? Okay, then on, any questions about the first two? We're going to waive both of them, okay. Now, number ten, that can go to.
No, it's an emergency.
That's emergency, needs.
Emergency ordinance.
Number ten is? Okay, so we're going to suspend the rules on that one then? Or just waive?
No, suspend the rules. At least I was told emergency ordinance, so I suppose we suspend the rules.
Should we take care of that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's been there. All right, how about number eleven? We're going to let that one go to the second reading, right?
Might as well.
And number twelve, we're going to waive that one. And who is going to do that one? Say for after schools, who wants to do that?
Probably, probably.
Either Deb or Community Development, man.
Would that be Cletus?
But it's, it was on, it was on.
It was here at Jenson, right?
It was on here at Jenson. Yeah, we'll do it out of parks. Okay.
Streets, actually, I guess.
You want to do it in the parks?
Oh, I did do it in the parks, yeah. And there are nothing on the second or first, second, first, and business, so anything else, anybody? Need to talk about?
All right.
So.
We got all the time for a public hearing.
Is there still nobody here?
We got twelve seconds for a public hearing.
Is there anyone in here? No?
Don't get confused by the people that are coming in for the board of.